Dubuque County Board of Supervisors meeting to order Monday, August 26, 2019, 5:30 PM. And I'd ask, at this time, ask everyone to rise, remove your lids, if you would. For the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, going to the agenda. We have public comments at this time. Anyone may address the board on matters of which are on the agenda. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address.
Would you want to comment related to the public hearing on the ATVs? Because they obviously could comment during the public hearing part two.
Of course. I think if it's related to the UTV, ATVs, or other public hearings, you're going to have that opportunity. So I would say probably not for that, but I wouldn't stop anybody from doing that.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
Two opportunities.
Yeah. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move forward on the agenda. Normally, number one is proclamations. We have none tonight, so I'm going to go to Agenda Item Number Two. Approval of minutes of meetings of July 22 and 30, 2019, and approval of minutes of the meeting of August 12, 2019.
I had one change, actually. It was on the meeting on the 12th. I'm trying to find it here. The long meeting. We received information about the Sustainable Communities Grant, and the handout was not from Dan Fox from ACIA. He wasn't present.
Oh.
It was a handle that was presented by me.
That was because somebody asked me if Dan Fox was here, and I could have swore that he was here. So he may not have been here at that time, but he was here.
Right, he wasn't here with regard to that.
Okay, so we'll correct that. Any other corrections or additions? Entertain a motion to...
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 22 and 30.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero.
What would you like to do on the 12th? I didn't know if you wanted to table those or if you wanted to...
Or do you want them tabled?
No, just correct it as corrected as found.
Okay, so a motion to approve as corrected.
Correct.
Okay. There's a...
You're going to do the motion as... I had not made a motion yet. I was just asking your questions.
So my motion is to approve the minutes as corrected.
I will second that. Motion to approve the minutes of the August 12, 2019 meeting as corrected. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried. We have consent items, which is Agenda Item Number Three, for those of you following on the agenda and those viewing the proceedings from your home or wherever you may be. Consent items, I'll read those. These will be acted on with a single motion without separate discussion unless one of the supervisors requests otherwise. Item A, Class WCN Wine Permit Sunset Ridge Winery. Item B, Class LC Liquor License Elk Lodge Number 297. Item C, Class LC Liquor License Burkey's Bar and Grill. And Item D, Dubuque County Treasurer Semiannual Report. These are, those are the consent items. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the consent items A through D. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. We have procurement procedures, which is item number four, and there are none. So we go to public hearings, item number five, and we have, first thing is Item 5A, Proof of Publication.
Make a motion to approve the proof of publication.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the proof of publication. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. We have Notice of Public Hearing Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance. And the Notice of Public Hearing is for September, the meeting on September 9, 2019 at 9:00 AM. I'll read those into the record. Case ZC number 08-23-19, William Cropfool and Matthew and Kimberly Cropfool. A1 Agriculture to R3 Single Family Residential. Case ZC number 08-24-19, David and Rebecca Lansing and Jeanette Bell. A1 Agricultural to A2 Agricultural Residential. Those are item B on the Notice of Public Hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve the Notice of Public Hearing.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve the Notice of Public Hearing in Item 5B. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. Okay, we have a, next item is 5C, Public Hearing. First reading of county ordinance regulating the operation of all terrain vehicles and off-road utility vehicles in Dubuque County, Iowa. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
And I will second that motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded to open the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. So the public hearing is hereby open, and if you wish to speak on this matter, please approach the podium, give your name and address for the record so that Mary can capture the information for the minutes. Okay, so the public hearing is open.
My name is Eric Branson, and I reside at 10701 Golden Oaks Drive in Dubuque. And in regards to the proposed ordinance to allow all terrain vehicles and off-road utility vehicles in Dubuque County, I have only one word: ridiculous. In referencing Chapter 331, County Home Rule Implementation, Subchapter 3, Powers and Duties of the County, Part 1, General Powers and Duties, a county may exercise any power and perform any function it deems appropriate to protect and preserve the rights, privileges, and property of the county or of its residents, and, and, to preserve and improve the peace, safety, health, welfare, comfort, and convenience of its residents. In my opinion, that this ordinance that would allow ATV and UTV off-road vehicles on Dubuque roads does not preserve or, and improve, safety and health of the county residents. And passage of this proposed ordinance would be ridiculous. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Again, if you would like to speak, now is the time. Please give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Wayne Demmer, 9018 Lone Pine Road, Elkhorn, Iowa, 52045. I guess my first question in reading through this ordinance that allows UTE, ATVs on Class B, Class C roads. I remember sitting in one of the first meetings when there was discussion by the county attorney who stated that if this happens, it's the responsibility of the supervisors to view and look at every road to make sure that they are safe for ATV riders. I guess my question is, do you consider B and C roads safer, as safe as an A road? Because that's what we're looking at, is safety, and I guess I would like an answer to that. Do you consider B and C a safe road?
I'd be happy to comment when you're done.
Okay. The problem is, you guys comment, and then nobody has a chance to come back. But okay, I'll move on then, because I think this issue is, there's a lot of people have private land and B and C roads, and some of that, that's why C's became gated because of the through traffic. And I think Dubuque County first is, if there's trees across the road, are they going to drive onto private property? So that's, I ask you for that consideration. I guess my other question, and I don't quite understand what I read here, are we opening up heritage trail parks, private county land? I really didn't get into total explanation, so I'm curious on if that happened in this ordinance. Another thing that I would like to bring up, again, is the cost. I know that I've seen numbers of $20,000 roughly for signage. My question to you guys is, is this the cost of the equipment to put in, the cost of the employees, the additional lumber that's going to have to be used? And as a rural taxpayer, is this going to come out of the general fund? Or are we going to, again, go to the road department? Because it's only rural taxpayers who pay into the county tax fund. And I really think that if we're going to open it up to people in the cities and everything else to use our county roads, it should definitely be considered that this money, if it's going to come out, does not come out of the road budget. Again, like I said, we're looking at cost of that, cost of insurance is $1,500. We still are going to be discussing tonight the $30,000 for safety with NICC, which, again, I stated at the last meeting, if people want to have safety, then let them pay for it themselves. I don't think the taxpayers should be responsible to promote safety in Dubuque County. It's up to the individuals riding. One last statement, I guess, is, safety, again, being on the committee was a big issue. I looked through this, the only thing I can see is safety is putting a flag on a UTV or ATV. Has it been all talk? That's my question. This ordinance, as I said, it's been passed, but we, the idea was supposed to be to make this safer. As I stated in the past, and I'll state it again, this has been a farce as far as the committees. I've read about the ordinance, the people have been on the ordinance, but basically, again, spent a lot of time, a lot of money, a lot of hours, but it was done the way a few people in this board wanted it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Be happy to address a few of them, and certainly, Wayne, you wanted to comment. I think there are a lot of good questions there. My understanding, reading the ordinance, in the B and C grade roads, the ordinance defers that responsibility to the county engineer to be able to identify and close those B or C grade roads. Is that your understanding as well?
Yes.
Is that your understanding? Okay. So that will rely upon the county engineer. Similar to every year, we pass a resolution granting the authority to the county engineer to close Class A roads as well, really any roads within the county. So that's the first understanding how that would be handled. The conservation, a couple issues there. Specifically, we did have a call out in Section 7D6 that prohibits use on the Heritage Trail. I thought it was good that we made that clear, that there's no usage on the Heritage Trail. The other key note to understand that is that the Board of Supervisors does not manage the conservation areas. That is, the Conservation Board, of which I'm one of five members of. And so at this time, conservation, land, space, operations, they have, they have a ban on ATV, UTV use, along with a variety of other things as well. And so until the Conservation Board changes, that will stay in play. But I did think it was important to call up the Heritage Trail, because I feel it has its purpose. I feel it's a wonderful gem that we have in the county, and I wanted to make sure it was clear that there was no intent, intention to allow access on the Heritage Trail from at least my seat. The signage, I think you have a good point on the fund, whether it's the rural fund or the general fund. I would be open to those. I think it probably would be, assuming that we're allowed by state code to use general funds for small amounts within the road budget, I would be open to those allocations coming out of the general fund and not the rural road fund. So that way, all property tax dollars would go to that effect. So those are kind of the ones we hit on. The last comment related to, question, I think, related to the process. I think the process has been very long. It's been multifaceted involved. We started with, you know, ad hoc meetings, and then went to more meetings that were out and about, various places at the county. We had kind of a citizens group, and then we had an internal group. You know, we made changes to the ordinance, but they were probably less than 10%. I think we started off with 20 roads that were embargoed, and now we're at 16. So there was some changes there, but not wholesale changes, and I think you expect that with any process. So I'm very pleased with the ordinance process, and I'm very proud that the citizens on both sides came together. It's painful, sometimes democracy and public input, and it's even more painful if your position is not one that carries the day.
If I might just jump in on the painful part, because I'm experiencing that, as those of you who know I voted in the past and how, how this has gone. I think some things need to be noted in a matter that is collegial, but also, I think, to another side of some things that Mr. Demmer has said. The Class B and C roads were intended always, they weren't discussed at all by the committees as being open. And when the county engineer was on vacation, we had our marathon session, and you and Dave changed that, and that's your prerogative, that's what you get to do. But I want folks to know that there's been some very good conversation with the county engineer about his ability to close Class B and C roads. I think he feels comfortable that there's been healthy discussion about that, and that we are going to defer to him, and he's quite good at this. We're all going to agree in terms of what the safety call is, so you will be charged with that. But there's been some discussion about that, and I intend to have ongoing discussion about ATV, what's working well, what's not working well with county engineer. He has a, every time we meet as a board, he provides us with a work session that's quite extensive, usually about road conditions and road issues. So that will continue. I think that in terms of Supervisor Wickham, the process, there are two committees that we formed that feel that they were not well-tended, that they were not probably listened to in fairness. You've seen the same emails that I have had. So I think the process has been long, but I don't know that folks that we asked to help us really feel like their voices were heard, and that's, that can just sometimes be the disconnect of supervisors who, sometime, we all listen to things that we want to hear. We listen for affirmation of what we already think we know. That's just human nature, as well as unfortunately being part of being a governing person. So, you know, I want to point out that the opportunity to change this ordinance is set in a manner, the sunset provision, so that everyone can see how each of us vote before there's a reelection. So those of you who are disappointed with the positions I've taken on this, you won't wonder where I am, you'll be able to see where that is and how we judge the passage of three years' time. I think that's fair to you. And also, folks, will have that opportunity to judge if either myself or Supervisor Wickham choose to run for reelection. So that date was chosen so that you would have time to see that before, before you had to vote on a reelection matter for that. So I think that's being honest and open with you and letting you have voice. So overall, I think that there are provisions in this ordinance that are disappointments to me certainly. Yesterday, I completed the DNR safety course online, and it's a very interesting process. I would encourage all of you to do that. Cost $34.95. Took me, ah, three and a half hours. I got questions wrong. Mr. Les Lang, you might not get questions wrong, but I did. So, but I thought it was a good process, and I would encourage everyone to do that. Our ordinance doesn't require anyone to do that. Our ordinance does start at age 18, doesn't have any provision, any exception, for young people. You have to be age 18, a licensed driver, with proof of insurance. I think that's fair. I think that does go some to safety. But overall, I, you know, I continue to maintain that it's about safety, and if you sit through the DNR online training, you will see that, that training program, and it is selected for Iowa, does not recommend that these vehicles be ridden on pavement. It does not. So as I went through that yesterday, you know, the safety issue, I think, is clear, and folks are choosing to do that, and I just think it's an unfortunate thing that the safety does not align with what we're going to do here as a county. So I appreciate your attention.
Thank you, Ann. Just, I'll just make a comment. Wayne Demmer said that the only thing that was safety-related was an orange flag. That's not true. We have numerous safety issues. Ann mentioned that we went with 18 as the age. We could have done 16 or 17. Matter of fact, under the farm exemption, exemption, 16 or 17-year-olds with a license are allowed out on the roads, not, not younger than that. A lot of people don't really know that, because I get a lot of calls about kids being out there on UTVs and ATVs. But there's, the law enforcement should be able to tell the difference between 18 and 15 or 16. We put in the ordinance, lit headlights, so they must have the headlights on at all times. It's not required by the state. Rearview mirror, we put in that they must have a rearview mirror. The orange flag, as Wayne had mentioned. A suitable and effective muffling device. And also, we added all occupied seating must be factory-equipped, and the additional seating from the manufacturer installed under the roll cage is allowed. And that was an issue because they do have seating that's outside the roll cages on some of these UTVs. And they can still do that, they just can't be occupied while they're going down a Dubuque County road. So also, during this whole process, which has been over two years, and we also have seat belts required, and basically, the concerns that I got were, will the rules of the road apply? Will they be allowed to have open containers? No. Will OWIDUI laws apply to them? Yes. Speed limit is max 35, or whatever the speed limit is. And will they have to have insurance? Yes. So all the rules of the road apply to these vehicles. And, you know, I just got back from ISAC conference, and I believe that there may be a majority of counties right now that have the ordinance or are about to pass it. And it's, you know, there are some, I even have a, got a heads up that Lynn County, which is much bigger than Dubuque County population-wise, is actually considering this. And there was a story in the Telegraph Herald in the last couple days stating the significant increase in tourism and tourism dollars in Grant County. And, you know, I think that's all part of this process, and, but I do think that we developed a good, safe ordinance. We spent a lot of time on this, and, you know, I think some people unfortunately think that if you don't agree with them, that you haven't listened. That if, you know, you know, so again, I don't think there's anybody in here that's going to say that they didn't get their email returned from me on this. And, you know, I will say that emails that I've received are at least 25 to one in favor of this. But I believe this is, this is going to be a positive for Dubuque County. And I think there's going to be economic benefit, and I think the road is already being shared by bicycles, motorcycles, pickups, cars, trucks, and I think that the UTVs and ATVs will fit in. All right, public hearing is still open. If you'd like to comment, please approach the podium.
And I, for one, want to start out, want to say thank you for the time and effort it's taken to put this together. I do live in a landlocked area, which is Charlie's Lane, which is perpendicular to John Deere Road South. I can see your point. It is very busy. The weekends are nothing like during the week. The weekends are nothing like during the week. Granted, I'm a little sad that it's not open, but I will live with it and I will take it down past the bridge and unload there, I guess. As you know, change is difficult and this has changed for Dubuque County. And I see it as a positive change. So I thank you once again.
Thank you. Public hearing is still open. Anybody would like to speak? Please give your name and address for the record.
Ron McCarthy, 207 Oak Horse Drive, Eppworth, Iowa. Just wanted to thank the three of you and the other committee members, Anthony, everybody that put lots and lots of time and effort into this long process. I know it's been a painstakingly long process and I do appreciate all of your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The public hearing is still open. If you'd like to speak, please approach the podium, give your name and address for the record. All right.
Richard Kaufman, Massie Station Road, Dubuque. I think you probably know my position from all the meetings that I attended here lately and from my letters to supervisors and to the editor and in talking to each of you individually. I really believe that the ordinance is a terrible mistake for our county. And I'm wondering if you gave consideration to law enforcement, the law enforcement petition came from the Dubuque County Sheriff's Department and almost all of the counties, the small cities in the county that were opposed to having to enforce such a regulation. And they were frankly frightened about the safety considerations that are just inherent with having these ATVs and UTVs on county highways. So, and in their petition, they asked that the ordinance be rescinded and I'm wondering if you gave any consideration to that. Despite all the tremendous number of hours and costs that probably went into developing the ordinance, I still think that ought to be considered. So that's, that's where I've been on this. And I'm very worried about peace and tranquility in the county. We live in the county on a farm. And even before, before this ordinance, there are ATVs running up and down our county road and I can't imagine how it'll be once there's a whole, a whole new set of participants in that activity. And I do believe it's just a recreational activity, which really is not necessary on roads that are made for public transportation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
If I might comment for a moment on Mr. Kaufman's comment about our contact with the small cities in the county. I do think that that's something that we drop the ball on. We, well, let me speak for myself. I certainly told the mayors throughout this process that we would be back to them and ask them for their input as this final ordinance draws down and affects their cities. And we didn't do that unless you think that the notice that was published on Wednesday in the Dyersville commercial and the Cascade Pioneer has noticed to them. And we were at a mayor's meeting with them and it wasn't on the agenda officially, so we didn't discuss it. But I certainly gave that to them. And I think that probably what's most disheartening to me about that is that I don't know that they even, they're not surprised. They're, they're not surprised that we didn't come back to them and give them one final opportunity for input. And that's, that's going to be my takeaway about this, honestly. Safety first and then I think we discounted and did not encourage and seek counsel from our cities and towns. And I think that's, that's an unfortunate thing that we did. And so I would have wanted us to do better with regard to that.
I, I guess my vantage point on that is I just see it maybe through a different lens. I probably spoke with 20 out of the 21 mayors from our towns and had discussions with them. They were certainly aware of our meetings. In fact, they were in some of their towns, some of their meetings were. And as you stated, we published the ordinance and they were at a meeting with all the mayors. Probably had 15, 16 out of the 21, 10, somewhere in that neighborhood, maybe a little less. It wasn't specifically a line item in the agenda, but we had Dubuque County conversations. I had side conversations with half a dozen of them. None of them mentioned it. Many of the towns, I mean, not many, a few of the towns had already passed ordinance for allowances. I would think that would tend to make you feel that they're moving in that direction. So I, I don't see it that we just rolled over the local towns. I think they're wonderful at governing their areas and I don't think they're shy at contacting us because I've contacted them on many other items. So I, I don't see that that was an opportunity missed. I see that that was a step that we were able to get to those other elected officials within Dubuque County and say, what do you think? And not all of them agreed. And some of them said, yeah, they thought it was a bad idea. But there were also others that were in favor of it, at least from my conversations.
And County Engineer Bargat and I met with Mick Mickle from the city of Dyersville about one road that he wanted to be off limits and we listened and we excluded that road and we kept that road excluded, Dyersville East Road. And, you know, I talked to mayors from other towns that, you know, welcomed this. And we've gotten emails from other small towns that are waiting for us to finish up this ordinance so that they can adopt this ordinance for their towns. And they currently don't have it. So I think the number of towns will be expanding that have it. And, you know, I think, I think the, again, when we go to these ISAC conferences, that's Iowa State Association of Counties. I actually ran into Anthony's counterpart, the county engineer from Clayton County. And I asked him, I said, how's it going up there with this? I mean, I know I've gotten Anthony's report from Delaware County. He said, prior to us having an ordinance, we got lots of complaints about people operating on roads, kids operating on roads. He said, now we get almost nothing because it's almost like the people that are using it are self-policing and the problems just aren't there. And I said that, you know, I'm thinking to myself and I told him, that's exactly what we had here. Lots of complaints about kids operating ATVs and UTVs illegally, apparently, on our roads. And again, I said, I think having a date, starting this at 18, I think is the right thing to do. I think it'll be easier for law enforcement to pick out 18-year-olds than it is 16 or 17-year-olds. So, anyway. Any other comments? The public hearing is still open. If anybody else would like to comment, please feel free to approach the podium, give your name and address for the record. Looks like we may have gotten through the public hearing. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Do the last call.
I think I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. Is there a second? Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 It's carried three to zero. Public hearing is closed. All right. Back to the agenda, unless there's other discussion.
Oh, go ahead.
Because we have another agenda item. Agenda item 5D is the resolution approving the county ordinance regulating the operation of all terrain vehicles and off-road utility vehicles in Dubuque County, Iowa.
Make a motion to table.
Motion dies for lack of a second. Okay. We have a resolution approving the county ordinance regulating the operation of all terrain vehicles and off-road utility vehicles in Dubuque County, Iowa.
I will make a motion to suspend the requirement that this ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
I will second that.
Discussion, please.
Open for discussion.
Thank you. I've not been a supervisor very long and the training that I attended in January in Des Moines was for newly elected officials. And there's a section of conversation about how you go about governing because I'm looking for tips and I'm asking the questions. And we did talk about ordinances and how many times you would read an ordinance. You know, I'm looking ahead knowing that this is coming up. And the standard provision for ordinances is three times, a reading three times. And I asked you both on the 12th of August if you would agree that we would have three readings and you both declined to comment on that. I would again urge you to know that it's, it's really about good governance and about giving opportunity for the process to be engaged. And it isn't about who shows up today or how many letters to the editor it is. When I also was at ISAC, Supervisor Baker, there was general discussion about this and people said, oh, well, you're going to have three readings, you'll have public hearings, you'll have three readings. And I said, I, I don't, I don't think so. I don't, I think we're going to rush this right on through, we're just going to keep moving. And they were just surprised that we would take an issue that has this amount of folks who feel it's, it's not, it's about safety and that we're not going to give it, it's the time that is set in the code to give it. Yes, we can waive and, and we're going to waive probably later in this meeting about, you know, entrances and Platts. There's lots of things we waive those three readings on perhaps. But I don't think this is that. I think a little extra time, even if it's here at the end, is important. If you rush this through tonight, they cannot ride tomorrow. It doesn't happen de facto like that. We know that, that there's a delay. And so even in discussions with engineers, this is not the county to rush this through because it is an urban rural county. There are 60,000 people who live inside the city, as you, as you know. Probably ridiculous for me to even remind you of that. So the erring on the side of caution or pausing for their other comment to develop, this is, I just don't believe this is the time to exercise lack of encouragement for public participation. This is, this is not that moment. This is not that ordinance.
Thank you, Ann. I'll, I'll comment. This has been a lengthy process. I think it was February of 2017, if I'm not mistaken. So I think there's been plenty of time for everybody to get their feelings out there and have their input. So I, I'm very comfortable with where we're at in the process. So there was a motion to suspend the requirement that this ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings and it was properly seconded. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Carried two to one. All right.
I'll make a motion that the ordinance be adopted and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the ordinance in the official county newspapers as required by law.
I will second that. And any further discussion? In discussion, I will say that when this passes, because I plan on voting for it, that it doesn't mean that the roads are open tonight or tomorrow. The ordinance has to be published in the official publications. And I don't know if we have somebody here, do we have an idea when that might be?
Week from this Wednesday?
We have Wednesday, a week from when? A week from, okay.
Cascade Pioneer and Dyersville Commercial published on Wednesday.
The earliest would be the Wednesday after Labor Day. Okay? Any other discussion or comments?
I think my last one would be, you know, there's process in government and I, I worked in government on the vendor side for, for many years, 25 years. And I worked with local, state and federal government. And my read is local government is usually the most efficient and usually the closest to the people. And I firmly believe that. I share in your general comments that we should have public participation, we should have public involvement, we should have the voices people heard. Obviously, we should follow the Code of Iowa. And I feel we've done all that. A lot of the angst people have with government, particularly sometimes state and a lot of times federal, is they can't make any decisions. They can't make any changes. People are frustrated, but they can't adapt. And I think local government's proven that they can and this is a change and adaption that we will make. I'm counting and planning and visualizing that if we have a culture of safety, education, enforcement, it will work well, like it's worked in many counties throughout Iowa. However, if that's not the case, I'll be the first here to listen to those complaints and take corrective action as needed. But it's time to decide. It's time to vote.
All right. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Carried two to one. All right. Next item on the agenda is item number six, approval of Platts. A resolution, final plat, five points estates, plat four, section eight, center township. And we'll go to our, can we please open that door?
We might be working on the elevator, but we'll keep, we'll see how the noise is.
Yeah, but it's an open meeting.
Yep. We'll see how the noise is with the elevator.
Do we have an update on the elevator? Everyone's out?
They're out. All right. Sorry about that, Tammy. Interim zoning administrator Tammy Henry. Thank you all for coming. Okay, again, this is five points estate, plat four, final plat.
Yep. Okay. So this property is owned by Ronald and Jessalyn Briner and it's located 2.275 miles northwest of the city of Asbury along Five Points Road. And the property is owned R2 single-family residential with a total of 7.781 acres surveyed. The purpose of this plat is to do a lot line adjustment to place the pond on one lot per their attorney's advice. Receiver creates two lots. Lot one is a total of 3.076 acres with a home and a pond and it will remain in current ownership and use. Lot two is a total of 4.7505 acres surveyed and will remain in current ownership and use. Lot one will use an existing residential access off of Five Points Road and lot two will use an existing residential access off the private road Clay and Drive. There are no corrections or additions required for this plat. The mortgage holders' acknowledgements are signed and attached and some of the signatures are over 60 days old and they include the county treasurer of June 7, 2019, county assessor, June 7, 2019. This plat's been reviewed by myself as plat's officer and has all the required signatures. I respectfully recommend approval. And sometimes these are hard to tell. So what's happening here is, is you can see there's a pond here, all right? And what happened is the pond... And what happened is the pond ended up... Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. And so what's happened is, is the pond was laying on two parcels, and the attorney's advice is to get it onto one parcel, so that it's not a liability for them. So that's all they're doing, is doing a lot line adjustment. And you're not going to see it on this aerial here, but the pond would be in this area in here.
The pond's not built right now, right?
The pond is built.
Oh, it is built, okay.
Yeah, these aerials that I have are going to, in 2016, and it was done in between.
Sounds good.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the final plat.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution for the final plat, five points estates, plat four, section eight, center township. All in favor?
Wait a discussion? I'm sorry. Okay, I know it's privileged, but Anthony, I think this pond's pretty close to that road, and we just opened it to ATVs. Can you just look on your camera and see what that looks like, the road? I don't think this has a big shoulder here. We know this section. What do you see there, Tammy?
So the pond sits back further behind houses. So the pond is not, yeah, the pond is not sitting up front, it sits back.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. You bet.
Any other comments or questions? Motion was made and seconded for approval. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, carried three zero. Item 6B, resolution, final plat, O'Brien Road subdivision, section 27, Prairie Creek Township.
Okay. This property is owned by Victor and Jean Thayer and Clifford Fobb, and it's located .38 miles north of the city of Bernard along O'Brien Road. The property is owned R3 single-family residential with a total of 5.996 acres surveyed. The purpose of this plat is to correct boundary lines between neighbors. The survey creates two lots. Lot one has a total of 4.199 acres surveyed with a home, and it will remain in current ownership and use. Lot two is a total of 1.797 acres surveyed with a home, and it will remain in current ownership and use. Lot one will use an existing residential access off of County Road, O'Brien Road, and lot two will use an existing residential access off the private road Irish Hill Lane. There were no additions or corrections required for this plat, and there are no liens or mortgages on this property. This plat has been reviewed by myself as plat's officer and has all the required signatures. I respectfully recommend approval. So this is a situation, I'm going to bring it in the area for you. What's happening is what they're truly using. So these two neighbors have truly had a difference in what they're using, and they have decided to get that corrected as they get older. So they want to make sure that this lot line is changed to actually reflect what they use. So it's again, just a lot line adjustment between neighbors.
Were both parties agreeable to the plat?
Yes.
Did they both sign off on the plat, or only? They did, okay. Thank you.
Question for you, Tammy. If you put the other piece back up, what's all the blue shading mean?
So what this blue here is? That's all floodplain. So that's all, that's all waterways.
The hundred-year floodplain, do you know?
Yeah, that would be the hundred-year. Actually, if I put this one down, it might show a little better for you. So that doesn't fall into floodway, it falls into floodplain. So that's the hundred-year floodplain.
Motion to approve.
I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution, final plat, O'Brien Road subdivision, section 27, Prairie Creek Township. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. Item six, under approval of Platts, section C, resolution, Schmidt Balltown Place, section 14, Jefferson Township.
Sure you can see them all. I'm going to turn it so you can actually see them all. Okay, so you have your lot one, two, and three here, okay? All right. The property is owned by Dennis and Deborah Schmidt, and it's located .93 miles northwest of the city of Cheryl along Balltown Road. The property is owned A1 Agricultural with a total of 148.376 acres surveyed. The purpose of this plat is to divide the farm up between family members. The survey creates three lots. Lot one has a total of 48.958 acres surveyed, and it will remain in agricultural use and be sold to their son, Justin. Lot two is a total of 46.592 acres surveyed, and it will remain in agricultural use and be sold to their son, Rob. Lot three has a total of 52.826 acres surveyed with a home and farm buildings, and it will remain in current ownership and use. Lot one will have access to Balltown Road across lot two and Schmidt Balltown Place, and lot two will have access to Hebercon Road across lot three and Schmidt Balltown Place, plat two, and lot one in DND Schmidt Acres. Lot three will have access to Hebercon Road across lot one and DND Schmidt Acres. There were no additions or corrections required for this plat. The mortgage holders' acknowledgements are signed and attached, and this plat's been reviewed by myself as plat's officer, and I respectfully recommend approval. So what's happening here is we have a farm where the entire family is involved in the farming in the area, and mom and dad are starting to make sure that they're getting things taken care of. And so each of the boys are going to be taking some of the farm, and eventually, as Deb and her husband get out of farming, those boys, one of the other sons will come in and take the rest of the farm. So it will remain in the Schmidt family, and it will remain in farm use.
And when they, they talk about access across the lot, is that an easement granted?
Yes. Those are easements.
So how many easements do we have here going across things?
Let's see here. You'll have lot one in Schmidt Balltown Place, and then lot two will have the access across lot three. So there's one. And then we'll have lot one will have access, so we're going to have three accesses. Now eventually, those accesses won't matter because they will have ownership, they have attaching ownership. The one son has property up here, and so he'll have access. The other son has property over here, and he'll have access. But for now, the way this plat is divided up, we had to show the access in case somewhere, some along the line, something changed, we had to make sure that there was a written access.
Absolutely. And everyone's obviously in agreement to this.
Yes.
Just looks like one of those cases, a future board's going to go, what were they thinking? We've seen those occasionally where it's like...
One of these pieces made our agricultural will because they're all over 39 acres. Yep, I get it.
Motion to approve.
I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution for the Schmidt Balltown Place, section 14, Jefferson Township. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tammy. So we have, go to item seven on the agenda. Seven A, these are action items, and we have a resolution appointment of deputies, assistants, and clerks. I guess we'll go to Don Sherman, our HR director.
Reviewed these and recommend approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution. Any discussion? All in favor? Oops.
We have an RN at Sunny Crest.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. Seven B, resolution approving the purchase of a 2019 Dodge Caravan SXT from Talky Motors.
Don, were you involved with this one? There's, and specifically what I'm getting at is the $4,300 difference.
No, we only helped him with the specifications. He was the one who reviewed the bids to make a recommendation.
Okay.
Normally, we take the low bid.
Yeah, the documents state that...
I read that there's some features on the other one that they liked.
I would feel comfortable, I don't see anyone from Veterans Affairs here, Randy and his group. I would, and Chris is probably busy, I'm sure, just, I would probably look to table this unless you two feel strongly to move forward with it. It says $4,300 difference on a competitive bid, and they're taking the higher bid because of availability and a few features. But that kind of defeats why you go out to bid. You're trying to...
Do you have an explanation as to why? Does anyone know the answer to it?
There's a letter in here.
The letter states that, you know, you read the letter, and I just paraphrased it, I thought, but a couple of safety features, hands-free, push-button doors, and availability. I think tinted windows, tinted back windows were another feature, and availability. One has it on the lot, the other one would have to go get it, do a trade, might take a couple of days in my experience. I'll make a motion to table this resolution.
Second. Going along with supervisor.
Motion made and seconded to table. Any further discussion?
Just a further little conversation with, you know, HR and facilities, and possibly with the board if they need it. I would just like to have a little further understanding that this is really what they want for the additional cost.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor of tabling signify by saying aye.
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 Carried three zero. All right. Seven C, resolution approving agreement for services with FEH Design for Election Office in the courthouse.
Well, I have to say, it's the smallest contract I've ever seen with FEH, so I'm very happy with that. He left. Because I believe the West Campus was about that same price with another zero, or maybe three zeros. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution in seven C. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carried three to zero.
I will comment, I was teasing, I'm very pleased with FEH Services so far.
Seven D, duplicate warrant. Since check was located, so we don't have it actually. Seven E, is a resolution to approve the amended resolution 19-144, adding one additional deputy to the sheriff's office.
So you had approved this at one of our last meetings. Under code, you are required to approve the number of deputies, and so that's what this resolution does, to be consistent with Iowa code.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
I will second it with just some brief discussion.
Okay. Motion made and seconded, open for discussion.
My previous memory is the other resolutions actually list how many deputy sheriffs there are. I don't know if that's required by code. This one just says we add one.
So the one in July lists every single deputy.
So you're referencing...
So this is just amending that resolution.
Okay, you're referencing Resolution 19144, or adding one to that number. Okay.
To that number.
Would it have been so hard just to put the whole number? As opposed to just referencing 19144? But I got it, okay. Just doesn't tell me anything.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. Item seven F, resolution approving contract with US Cellular for hotspots for elections.
Motion to approve.
And I will second that.
Yeah, and the amount is $2,700 per year. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three zero. Seven G, resolution approving change order 002-BP2 for work performed at the West Campus.
This is the resolution we had our extensive work session about today? Make a motion to approve.
And I will second that. All right. And that change order in seven G is the amount of $32,659.21. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carried three to zero. Seven H, a resolution approving and authorizing the chair to sign the letter of interest for the University of Iowa Initiative for Sustainable Communities Program. Seven H.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carried three to zero. Seven I, resolution approving the contract with Northeast Iowa Community College Business and Community Solutions for the ATV, excuse me, for the ATV/UTV Training and Educational Outreach Services.
We all comment a little bit on this. This was an initiative that I was leading, and I think it ties into my comments that I made five minutes ago about having a, trying to create a culture of safety, education, and enforcement. And those first two, I think the Board of Supervisors has responsibility to. The third one, the enforcement part, is relies upon the county sheriff and his staff. And so I believe that having NICC help administer this safety program, this training educational program designed for both youth understanding and awareness of what our ordinance are and the dangers of youth ridership for ATV/UTVs, and then also working with adult groups related to the ordinance has tremendous value to try to reach those safety and education outcomes. The last thing I'll mention is that I am an NICC employee, along with a Dubuque County employee, but I have no oversight, no management, no responsibility, and no compensation related to the Agricultural Safety Center that will be administering this.
So noted.
Jay, if I might just engage you in some conversation about this? Because the things that are contained in this proposal are not reflective of what the ordinance now says. We are not allowing riders under age 18, and this, of course, has extensive outreach to high schools. That's an expensive component. And the total package that we're looking at is $30,000 broken between two years. So, I mean, I guess I have a concern about that, that we're not, it's, the cost is targeted at a community that is not covered by our ordinance. I think that's important to note. We didn't pass any user fees, so there isn't any way for us to cover these costs in addition to signs and so forth. So it's going to be a cost to the county, and we'll have to determine what budget fund we'll take that from. But, you know, I did just yesterday take the DNR course online, and it cost $34.95. And I also have the catalog from NICC at home that shows that they routinely charge people $350 to do motorcycle classes and driver's education classes. So I'm not sure why we would be spending, I think, $12,000 giving NICC the creation of a program. There are programs available, there's, available through the DNR. And so it's fine if the, if NICC wants to partner with us and to create a climate of safety, certainly we need that. But I don't want to spend the taxpayers' dollars telling NICC that you're the person I'm choosing again. You know, it's not out for bid, we're in another situation where we're identifying the vendor. I have a concern about that. But this is not the, in my opinion, the appropriate way to spend the taxpayer dollars on this. If we want to spend money on the creation of a program, I don't know, you know, I'm on the board at Clark University, maybe there are other partners out there that would, that would want to partner with us too to do that if we're going to pay $30,000 over two years. So I, I think there is a course, it's widely available, it costs $34.95. And if you want to, you know, my motion was going to be to table, but to proceed with NICC, I think we want to go back and make sure that we're talking about the same program relative to the ordinance we just passed, to make sure that it is geared toward folks. You know, part of their proposal is to put up billboards that talk about have fun, be safe. I don't know how well that's going to go over in the city of Dubuque, you know? So not sure that this is the time and the place.
Yeah, I think those are valid talking points, and... Yeah, I think those are valid talking points, and, you know, the first one I would say is that, you know, if we're 18 and over, the group you want to meet with are the youth riders. That's exactly who we should be spending our time and energy with. That's all I heard through this whole thing, is they're already riding on the streets, the roads, and they're young. That's what we need to stop. That's the highest, highest incident that we'd have. Unlicensed, unregulated youth ridership. We need to focus on the outreach and the education, the safety to that group to let them know it's not all right, and they need to wait until they're 18, till they have a violated driver's license, and then they can operate. And it's pretty common through, whether it's drug enforcement, whether it's, you know, alcohol, whether it's, you know, a variety of other programs to try to educate the youth. So I think that's exactly where we need to target, the secondary group of just awareness and outreach. It is a new thing, and, you know, I think we need to inform the public that there may be these vehicles or will be these vehicles on the road. I mean, that's a, that's still going around. That law's been in effect probably for 50 years, you're not supposed to drive around school buses, but there's still government campaigns to promote that safety. And so this is the model, and I think it's, I think we'll have some successful outcomes. And whether they're billboards, or radio ads, or items that are held up, such as that, you know, refrigerator sticker, those will be things that the safety group at NICC can work on. And then lastly, I mean, we're very blessed that we have a national safety group right in our backyard. And so they've been doing tremendous work in the ag sector, they already have ATV and UTV onsite, on-premise, and they've used those in training before. So while, you know, we could open it up to Clark and other, you know, liberal arts and other educational entities, this is a group that's clearly aligned to the rural community, they're clearly aligned to rural Dubuque County where the ridership will mainly occur. So I feel, I feel real comfortable and real confident this is going to be a benefit and something that we will be wise tax dollars spent and provide the best return on investments we can, and that's enhanced safety and education.
And I like the fact that the proposal includes outreach to Dubuque County Conservation, Sheriff's Department, County Engineer, and then the Dubuque County ATV, UTV Alliance, and the Northeast Iowa Action Trail Riders Club, also known as NEET, city governments within Dubuque County, and then outreach to the high schools. And they actually list the high schools, and I agree that that's the time to talk to them about safety. Many of them are 18 or will be 18 when they graduate, and, you know, I think that's really the appropriate time, is to get that to them ahead of time, because once they turn 18, you know, not that they won't be interested, but I think having the training prior to that is important, so I like the program.
Think about the course, you know, the marketing and the safety piece as compared to the development of a proprietary tool. We're going to pay, and I can't find it here in front of me, I think it's $12,000 to NICC to develop the program. Shouldn't they develop that program? Shouldn't that be something that they wish to do? Why are we paying them to develop a program? If they want to go out and say, "Ride safe," and here's a refrigerator magnet, or a t-shirt, or whatever it is, swag, take the DNR course. It's $34.95, and it doesn't cost the taxpayers 12 grand to make it. I think there's something to be said for that, that, you know, we don't have to do this tonight. We've passed an ordinance, and we might want to give it a little digestion time before we come back and spend a big ticket price. And that's what I'm, I guess I'm asking you to do. It doesn't have to be one, two, it could be that we look to see, even some of the comments that they make themselves in this is without a requirement, without a, and again, you know, you always can't find it when you need it. But they say that without a requirement, that they have to take the course before they ride, they're not sure it will be effective. You can develop a course, but maybe it's going to be like the ECIA loan fund, nobody will want it. You know, so, I mean, taking a little bit of time to see if we can get this right and be spot on might be, I guess that's the course of action I would like to see us take.
Yeah, yeah, fair enough. I mean, I think, I think it'd be wise if I was a parent of somebody that was potentially going to learn or ride ATV, UTV, which I am not, I would recommend taking the DNR course and listening to NICC. They're different venues. Online courses that are $34 is a screen that you probably walk through. The message that NICC will deliver will be in-person, will be face-to-face, will be much more intimate, and hopefully much more meaningful than a $34 online course.
But the $34 online course, it isn't, it isn't an either-or thing. It is, how do we reach those same people? And there's videos on that. I mean, it was an easy thing to do, it was an unfortunate thing that, you know, all that convinced me was I'm never going to ride. So probably I'm not the target, but it was, there are lots of videos, it was lots of good information. And it isn't to say that NICC wouldn't develop the same thing, but, you know, that doesn't address the, the why are we spending the money for their proprietary purpose? And maybe they can market for us, but maybe what the market is, that if they want to develop a class and charge $350 like they do for driver's ed and for a motorcycle course, you know, they can, they can do that if they think the market's there, but not at this time is where, is where I'm at. Not to say that I wouldn't someday, or in response to, if that's the complaints that we get, you know, in the future, I'm not there now.
I guess I, the fact that they're, they have in the, in the proposal outreach, radio ads to the public, you know, giving people a heads up that, that for the, I guess, few people that aren't aware that this discussion has been ongoing for two and a half years, I think that having billboard ads, radio ads, social media posts, outreach to high schools, including counselors, I think is, is, I think that does definitely lean towards safety, and I think it fits in with the ordinance that we adopted, which that in itself has been a process of reviewing safety features. So I think that this will be an enhancement of the ordinance that we just passed.
I'm wondering if there's a way for them, you know, in their proposal deliverables. I have it now in front of me, page 146 in the, in our Dropbox today. But it does talk about the $13, $13,000 is the course development and implementation. So the marketing piece, we could pursue that as a separate piece. We could also, you know, have marketing dollars given to conservation if they're in places where the high school kids, I mean, they talk here about the high schools are, you know, all of the high schools in the county certainly. Cascade, Dyersville, and so forth, Beckman. You know, they've got 24 of those classes over two years, is $11,000. I would like to see if somebody else can do that for us, if that's how we want to go. Outreach to city governments. Those are my thoughts.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
There's a motion to approve the resolution in 7I. There had not been a motion made at this point, we were in discussion. Is there a second?
I will second it. 7I, the resolution approving the contract with Northeast Iowa Community College for the UTV, ATV Training and Educational Outreach. Further discussion? I think we've had good discussion on it. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Carried two to one.
7J.
Should we address that in terms of where that money will come from? I guess we can have Stella bring that back to us.
Yeah, that'll be a budget amendment. 7J, resolution approving the contract with Civic Plus for the design implementation and maintenance of the county website.
Very excited about this. Make a motion to approve that resolution.
And I will second this.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution, 7J, and it's in the amount of $35,300, excuse me, $35,639 in year one, and then in year two, an ongoing annual cost of $8,642. And this is for the design, implementation, and support of the county's website. Is there any discussion?
Just note that this also did not go out to bid.
Right, it did not. And Dawn, I had asked this.
The stakeholders did that for us.
I had asked this on the general relief, this was not required to go out for bid, is that correct? Okay. Right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. All right, the next item is 7K, and it is related.
Nope, I'm sorry.
Excuse me. We just did 7J, now we're going to 7K, and this is a resolution approving the contract with Civic Plus for the Agenda Management System. And this is, I'll just give the details of it. It's for the design, implementation, and maintenance of the county's Agenda Management System. And the upfront, one-time cost of $14,715, and then the year-two ongoing annual cost of $7,830. And on both 7J and 7K, and we have our folks here from IT if we have questions, but it includes a considerable amount of training for staff, is that correct?
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
And I will second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. 7L, resolution approving the 2019 JAG Grant Award.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
And I will second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the JAG or Burn Justice Assistance Grant Funds for the, our jurisdiction for the city, including the city of Dubuque and Dubuque County. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. Number eight, item number eight on the agenda is Communications, and I don't believe we have any. Item nine on the agenda is Appointments.
I'd like to have some discussion about one.
We have 9A1, which is the Mental Health Stakeholder Committee, MHDD Stakeholder Committee. We had two previously tabled applications, one for an unexpired term ending June 30, 2021, and one for the three-year term ending June 30, 2022. And three vacancies for the three-year term ending June 30th, 2022. Open for discussion.
So this is a little bit of an example of when things go too well, which is an odd thing when we look at appointments. But I had Jody Jansen create for me today the Mental Health Disability Stakeholders Committee list, and looking at, and this is, this has gone run wild. Everybody wants to be involved in this issue, which is awesome. But we, if we approve these folks, we will have approved two individuals who live in East Dubuque, Illinois, and are not county taxpayers, and they are providers or members of advocacy groups. And we will, if we approve all of these folks, we will end up with only one person on the entire committee who's a consumer, and only one person on the committee who's a family member. And so we will have unintentionally been a victim of our own success and gotten a whole bunch of providers and a whole bunch of advocacy folks. And those who will be on the stakeholders group don't represent the people who actually use the system. It's people who create the system, people who build the system, but it's not the people in the system. And so I would like to table these appointments, this opportunity, until we get a chance to actually take a look at this, Jody and I, to see how are we, how are we going to do this? Also, three of the applications are specific to the Children's Mental Health Subcommittee, which I'm not even sure exists or can exist without the board taking some action. The stakeholders group, I think Supervisor Baker, you were at at least one meeting where they talked about this, and I think I'm quoted in the paper as saying, "We're doing this," and then got to thinking like, how are we, how can you take a committee, make yourselves into a subcommittee, and then appoint people only to the subcommittee, and then have them still be providers and not family and not consumers? So it's a little bit of being a victim of your own success, I'm just, might need a little bit more work, otherwise we can fill it. And it'll have lots and lots of providers, some who don't even here live here.
I'm comfortable taking your lead, you're the closest on the mental health and put the most time in, so if you feel we should take a little more time on this and review it, I'm comfortable with that. I'm very pleased with the applications as well, I'm happy that we were able to fill these boards.
Absolutely, I agree.
These are quality applicants, I think, you know, they should be considered. But I, I think if you'd like to, you know, shift into a lower gear and take it a little slower, I don't think there's any reason to rush it, but I will say the meeting, the last meeting that I was at was, the discussion was that the size of the board has gotten really big, and it's hard to get things done and have that many people in agreement. So the discussion came up on subcommittees, and I think Representative Eisenhardt had some input into this as well. So that's when they looked, decided to look at topical subcommittees. But I don't disagree that slowing it down and having some more discussion is probably the way to go on this. But I, you know, I'm impressed with the level of folks that have applied. And also, I do think we've previously approved some folks who don't live in Dubuque County, because on these boards, I don't think that's a requirement. Okay.
And that person is Deb Lang, and she's also a provider.
Okay.
So.
Right, I just remembered that we have kind of, we have approved somebody who doesn't live in Dubuque County, but they work in Dubuque County, so, but I'm okay tabling this, so I guess a motion to table would be in order.
Motion to table.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to table. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero to table. Next item, 9A2, this is the Tom Hancock Grant Committee Application. I think we've got an application from one of our EMT providers and firefighters, Jill Black from Farley to be on this committee. There's a motion to approve the application from Jill, is there a second?
Yeah, I don't, don't know Jill, but she's obviously the, she says here is the Secretary for the EMT in Farley, EMS. So I think that would be an excellent candidate, assuming she meets the requirements for gender and all that stuff. All will second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried.
Mr. Carey, if you mind, if I may, the supervisors also, per the, what the resolution. resolution that you approved, do have a member, a seated member. So whether you do it now or we can put it on a, a future agenda, we do need to have the board appoint their member to this committee.
Can we take action on that without it being on the agenda?
On the agenda.
It's on the agenda?
It's in one Board of Supervisor appointed. It's on there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the last, yeah.
All right. So I, I think at the last meeting, we said if, you know, if we're looking for gender equity, and I think they've accomplished that, and I had expressed interest, I've, in my almost three years on the board, have been attending and, and, and representing the Board of Supervisors with the Dubuque County Firefighters Associations. I would be interested in, in being the supervisor on this board. Certainly willing to listen to other interests as well.
I, I do have a comment about this board position as well, and that is that when I, we talked about it the last time we met, this, this board reached out to me to say that they felt that I would give valuable experience because of the, the granting experience and the review of the applications and so forth. And so I understand we don't need equity to comply with the law because we have a four, three female split, three women, four men. If we, so it's not as if we, we've reached our, our minimum. But I do, I just want to point that out, Dave. I know you want to serve, and, and I will step aside because of that. I will defer to the chair. But I, I just want you to know, it's not that it's a whim or a wish. It's that they asked me to look at that. And I think I will still be involved, and I will still go listen to whatever questions they have. I mean, it's not, you're, you'll see, and you probably already know, it's not great shakes. Just, you know, listen and try to be inclusive. But I would defer if, you know, you wish to proceed, and, and that's fine. But I feel in fairness to myself, I wanted to also leave that note.
And I just, I appreciate that. And I think, Anne, I truly enjoy when you and I bump into each other at these community meetings. And, and, you know, there's quite a few that, you know, you and I have the same interests. And I, you know, I think that's, that's, that's all positive. And I think the folks in the community like to see the supervisors out and go into these meetings. And, you know, a lot of times between the two of us, we end up covering, and some of these aren't official assignments from the Board of Supervi- a lot of them are not, you know? And I, I think it, but I do think people appreciate, you know, and I give, I like to take a little poke at Representative Eisenhardt as well, but he, he's very involved in the community as well and shows up at a lot of these meetings. But he hasn't applied for this. So, anyway, I, and I would, I would, if, 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 you know, if I get appointed to this, I'd be fine. I'd be happy to serve, and I would, I would very much want your counsel and have you also show up. And if, and if we go where you're the appointee, I will show up as well and offer my assistance. So.
I would make a motion to appoint the chair, serve as the initial Board Supervisor member on the Tom Hancock Committee.
And I will second that with the same discussion.
Motion made and seconded to appoint the chair to the Tom Hancock Grant Committee, and it's open for discussion.
Yeah, I think one of the opportunities that, you know, we've done with some of these boards is that, you know, while consistency helps, I think it's okay if we do have a shorter term for supervisors to appear in different boards if they have those interests. So while it's a four-year term, obviously Supervisor Baker may not be able to go through that four years, or he may want to delegate that. And I think that's what we should maybe look to. And we've done that in other things. The Greater Dubuque Board, for example, was one we, we switched on, but the chamber usually was rotating, but you felt that I could serve that board well, and that's kind of the business community's my, my forte, and so I was happy to continue to serve on that board. So that might be another option to get more people involved over the course of a year as opposed to waiting for four years.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried. All right. We have nine B, which is informational only on vacancies.
Can I ask a question about?
Of course.
Looking at nine eight, or excuse me, B8, the Food Policy Council, how can those be vacancies? Didn't we just appoint all those folks? Ay, ay, ay. Well, let me get at it. Maybe so we can-
Maybe you can get some of the stakeholders committee to go over to the food council. All right.
Kind of the same thing, you know?
It's all relevant. All right. Anything else under nine B? Otherwise, we'll go to item 10 on the agenda, which is personnel requisitions. We have a permanent part-time courthouse security position. Dawn, do you have any input on this?
Yep. This is just due to a resignation effective this week, so it's not adding any additional FTEs to, to the part-time positions.
Okay. What's your pleasure on the?
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel requisition.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried. Three to zero. We have number 11, tabled and pending items, General Assistance Program.
Which I think probably should stay tabled, don't you think?
Well, I think we had a pretty good discussion on that today, so I guess-
Would you want to take it up again?
I thought we did too, and we certainly can add it back on the agenda. But tabled is meant to be things that we don't-
All right. We'll remove that.
We'll remove it as tabled.
Yeah, we can bring it back up.
I do believe we, we need to revisit the strategic planning under 11B, so.
I do have that. I've visited with ECIA, Kelly, I admire herself, to see if she could help facilitate conversation. I mean, I think she's reaching out to, Dawn and Stella are gonna be in that conversation too. So facilitate kind of a goal-setting, high-level, goal-setting priority conversation between us. And also, if, if there are any procedures or, you know, ways forward that we want to work on is how the board will interact with each other, getting things on the agenda. So, and, and also, they knew the SMART Plan, looking at whether there's goals or how, how do our personal priorities fit inside the SMART Plan? So, but I don't see this as being, at this time, something where we go out and we ask for the whole community to, to weigh in on and vote in on. I, I see it more like what the city of Dubuque's just completed, which is conversation kind of between themselves in terms of what they hear from the community and what they would like to pursue. And then all those things end up getting budget numbers and so forth as well. So that's where I am. If there's, what you kind of see this to be, I guess, matters. I really am not, I'm, where I am at right now, I'm not interested in biting off a 12-month, multi-meeting strategic plan. Because if we're gonna do that, I think we probably still need to start with some kind of goal-setting between the three of us about what are our priorities.
I, I think, I, I really, as far as, you know, strategic planning, I think what we need maybe is some goal-setting, spending priorities, that type of thing. Not only spending, but social priorities for the board. I'm, I, I think I'm okay with doing something like that. But at this time, I don't know about tackling a document that people worked on for a decade previously. I think, you know, when we have issues, I think it's, you know, because new things come up, I think, you know, maybe we can look at what we have, assess what we have, and where we might want to go. And knowing that the issues we're dealing with today, tonight, could be totally different in six months, depending on, for example, with roads, depending on our weather, how good or bad of a winter we have, you know, how the social and economic conditions might change in the, in, in the county. So I think some maybe, I don't want to say abbreviated, but more focused than, than a total long-range planning, and do that before, sometime before our budget process. And if ECA would want to lead us on that, I'd be okay with that. And then we can, you know, because we, you know, I, I, we did a little bit of that in the current budget, if you remember. There was one agency that we had funded for at least 10 years. I got the information from Stella. And I had never been contacted by them. They'd never made a presentation in my three budgets that I've gone through. So I know Anne may have been familiar with the organization, but, and they came in and they did a great job. And so I think that to me substantiated, and I think that's kind of what I'm talking about. Let's revisit, you know, just because we've given somebody money for 10 or 20 years doesn't mean that we should continue doing it without a good story. So, and good benefit to the citizens. So.
You know, I would also share, I understand it's Jay's turn to talk, but if I might just, that working on our relationship as a board is important. And finding, you know, we have just, we have survived, something I would never want to try to bite on in my first six months as a board member. The ATV, UTV, contentious, a lot of finger pointing by the public, that's okay. But making sure that we don't squander or waste opportunity for our county. We have, I think, smart, good people on this board that have been elected to work on future projects and to work toward the horizon of where the county wants to go. And no harm in, in getting some high, high-level facilitation to see what that next page looks like, to make sure that we're, we're examining that and having that conversation. So then, you know, I, I, I'll be brutally honest with you, I have heard folks say they hate our meetings because mom and dad fight with each other. And, and we're not gonna get a chance to reset that if we don't start working on resetting that. And I think that that goes to whether we can set our priorities out and be respectful of what those are and let that conversation happen.
I'll, if you don't mind, I'll jump in. I, I have a great deal of respect for both Anne and Jay, and it's my pleasure to serve on the board with both of you. So, any disagreements we have, I'll point to the fact that my wife and I have been together for 45 years, and we don't always see eye to eye. Now, in those debates, discussions, I usually am not on the winning side of those. But there really were, it's, this isn't about winning and losing. It's about taking a position, listening. And I think I said earlier tonight, some, some people think not, that we're not listening if we don't agree with them. And I think there was that from both sides of this debate. And so we, we all, we all put up with that. And I think now we, you know, we move forward, and I look forward to working in a positive manner with both of my counterparts on the board.
Well spoken by both of you. I concur.
All right. Anything else? We will go to the last item on the agenda then, which is, if I get there, because I flipped over. Public comments, item number 12. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters which are of concern to that person, which are not agenda items. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Please be aware that the board is limited in their ability to respond to such inquiries, and Iowa code prohibits the board from deliberating or acting on items not appearing on the agenda. We have staff, and we have Peter. Should I rule him out of order?
Yes, please. With a couple smacks right there.
You're out of order, Peter.
Out of order.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. I'm guessing Mary has some stuff for me.
Good job, sir.
Good job.
Thank you.
Jay?